Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the October 15th, 2019 regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. Before we do the pledge, I just wanted to give a shout out to Forsyth Central High School. They hosted the Forsyth County Band Exposition last night, and I know several of the board members were there. They really did a great job. All the bands from all of our high schools were there, and they performed. And it was really, it was really a fun celebration. They did a great job. So I just wanted to thank them for hosting all of our schools last night. So if you would now stand for the pledge. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have an agenda. Are any needed changes?
No recommended changes.
All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Darla. All in favor? That's unanimous. First off, we have recognitions with Fonda Harrison.
The most exciting part of the board meeting agenda is the opportunity to recognize staff members and students within our school system for their outstanding accomplishments. So tonight, we get the opportunity to announce or congratulate students from South Forsyth High School. So if you will, for those students that are here from South Forsyth High School, if you'll get up and come around over to this side, and I'll announce your names, and you can come through and shake everyone's hand. While they're coming around, I'll talk about, they're from the Family, Consumer, and Community Leaders of America at South Forsyth High School, and they participated in the SCC LA National Leadership Conference. And all three of these young ladies were gold medalists in their particular area of competition. And Ms. Emily Conan received a gold medal for food and nutrition. Amanda Edwards for food innovation, also a gold medal. And Kira Young, the Chapter Service Project Junior Gold Medal. So those that are here to support these young women and their work, please stand. From South Forsyth, parents and teachers and grandparents. Also-
Are the red jackets part of the blue ones?
It's a really nice look.
It is.
Also, we're excited to have the opportunity to recognize one of our teachers in Forsyth County Schools, and Jonas Stricker will come in. Jonas has, was the Teacher of the Year for Forsyth County Schools, I think, two years ago now. But even better than that, he has been recognized as the 2019 American Association of Teachers of German Educator for the entire United States. So this is quite the kind of-.
Where do you go from here? Did they give you a car?
So those that are here to support Jonas and his recognition, please stand. Also, an opportunity to recognize one of our wonderful partners here in Forsyth County Schools, and that is our Forsyth County Retired Educators Association. I'm not sure if you all are here to accept that. They are tremendous partners here at Forsyth County Schools, obviously retired educators from within our district, but they support a lot of the initiatives and projects that we have. And without their tireless efforts with these different projects that they support, we wouldn't be able to accomplish anything. They're a great partner with our Forsyth County Employee Retirement Reception here in Forsyth County Schools. They also help us out with our young Georgia Autocan competition. Just an interview with them. Congratulations. Thank you. Also, we're excited tonight to be able to recognize Dade Creek Elementary for another announcement of the fact that they're a national Blue Ribbon School for 2019. So Eric Gashman, principal, will come up. I don't know if you want to address that.
I have my wonderful assistant principals, Janice Sparks and Katie Carlson, and Lindsay Albertson and Anna Thompson, our counselors, and then Megan, of course, our fabulous P.I.T.S.
And so they're actually exemplary high-performing Blue Ribbon School of Excellence. So two red ones.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I'm not sure if there are anybody else from Batesville that everybody-.
Fonda, is this the students' stuff? And you have to, you have to wait like five, five or six years before you're eligible again.
Why isn't that special where you're at?
Oh, well, of course.
I learned from Sydney.
Okay, so that's all of our recognitions for tonight. Next, we have our Superior Spotlight Performance, our presentation, and that's actually from Lakeside Middle School. And Ms. Ed, are you going to do this presentation? Oh, you ladies are going to do it. They're going to be presenting on ROAR, R-O-A-W, I'm sorry, R-O-A-R, which stands for Responsibility, Ownership, and Achievement in Reading. So, thank you ladies.
Okay. Hi. Good evening. Should, I was going to use my phone to kind of set a timer so that I stay within the, are we good? Okay, I'm just a little, I'm just a little paranoid about that. And you know, I start, and then Lisa's taken over, so I want to make sure I give her her due time as well. Good evening, I'm Kim Dreasy, one of the assistant principals at Lakeside Middle School, and I wanted to share with you a little bit about the enrichment class that began at our school in the 2017-18 school year. Whoops, sorry about that. Can't see. There we go. Okay. But before I do that, I think it's important that I give you a brief background of where we started, so you understand how we got to where we are. So back in the 2010-11 school year, Spanish was cut from the sixth and seventh grade curriculum. And that left a dilemma for middle schools. So do we have a fifth class? Do we stick with four? So for several years, we had four core classes in the sixth and seventh grade, which was fine for the teachers. They had an extended length of time to teach. It was wonderful. But it created some major scheduling issues amongst the school. We were on two separate bell schedules with eighth grade, and, and so we couldn't have substitute coverage or teachers teaching cross-grade levels. So after a few years, we decided to add a fifth class back into the sixth and seventh grade curriculum. And it started as we adopted a prescribed curriculum for reading instruction, and it right away began to receive a lot of negative feedback from teachers and students. Students were bored. Teachers didn't feel like it was reaching all of the kids. They were not engaged in the learning. So about a year and a half into it, I created a committee, a literacy committee of content teachers, and we met to discuss some other options. It was about three years ago. And we researched different curriculum and programs that supported literacy. And I reached out to some other schools, and I met with Courtney Mallory specifically at Vicry Creek Middle. She was an instructional coach at the time. She spent several hours with me talking about their reading workshop class that they have, and I gained a lot of really good information from that, which I shared with the committee. We discussed that, as well as some other ideas, and we decided that we were determined to create a class that focused on reading, gave students choice, but it also was engaging for the students. And most importantly, we wanted to do something that was really going to have a major impact on students well beyond their years in middle school. So we developed a vision and a mission for the course. The committee came up with some names for the class, and the staff voted. And that is how ROAR was born. It stands for Responsibility, Ownership, and Achievement in Reading. It is a reading workshop-type class for sixth and seventh graders based on the ideas of Donalyn Miller and her book, The Book Whisperer, Penny Kittle in her book, Book Love, and is supported by Stephen Crashton's research and his book, The Power of Reading. It is a non-graded class that gives students choice and allows them to take ownership of their learning. And the graphic was created by Taylor Harbin, who was then a junior at Forsyth Central High School, who took our vision and turned it into this awesome logo. And we were very proud of her for that. So our vision was a school-wide community of lifelong learners who share their reading experiences with each other. And our mission, which drives this class every single day, is to inspire students to become lifelong readers by promoting choice, providing opportunities to engage in independent reading, and creating an environment that encourages the sharing of ideas and experiences. Our goal for the class ultimately was that students would read a minimum of 25 books within the school year, but we also wanted to make sure we were supporting personalized learning and the learner profile, which this most certainly does. Now, for the first two years, all sixth and seventh grade, yeah, all sixth and seventh grade teachers actually had to teach this class. And most of them were on board, but we really did need, when we ruled it out, we needed to appeal to the why for the teachers, so they understood why we were doing this. And basically, it's this. The research shows that students who have, who read more have higher knowledge levels, more expansive vocabulary, they score better on standardized tests, and they get better grades in school. Now, we did this for two years, and about halfway through the second year, it was apparent that we needed to, to face some reality, which was that there were still a handful of teachers who were not buying into the vision and were not implementing the curriculum with fidelity. And so what we decided to do was, we surveyed the teachers to see who was really enjoying teaching that class. And it just so happened that the teachers who loved teaching it were the ones who were actually inspiring students to become better readers. And they were really implementing the vision. So this year, I am very excited to say that we have six phenomenal ROAR teachers in sixth and seventh grade who are pushing forth our vision and mission for students every day. So the, the data though, even in the first year, I think was very impressive. And most everyone was very excited about what was happening. So from a, from a money standpoint, there was a 50% increase in books purchased at the book fair. So we didn't include candy and posters and whatever else was happening, but actual books. And that first year, 70% of students actually met their goal. But even better is that 89% of the students read at least 11 books, so between 11 and 24 books that year. And it was the same 89% that we had surveyed at the very beginning of the school year that said that they had read two or fewer books the year before. And then that next year, we actually had an increase, 85% of the kids reached their goal in year two. And as you can see, our media center specialist and parapro were not expecting to be as busy as they were. We had an increase, a 156% increase in circulations from the school year before we adopted ROAR to the next school year, and it continues to grow every year, as you can see. But there are student impacts from this class that go well beyond the, the measure, the data. There are things that just can't be measured. Student confidence, pride in their accomplishments, and excitement for learning. So I would like to turn this over to Lisa Gasser, who is actually our lead enrichment teacher, she's our content lead, to talk about exactly what the class looks like from a student perspective, and the feedback that these teachers have received from students, and, and the feedback she's received from the other teachers as well.
Thank you so much for letting us share this with you. This is such an exciting thing, and there is no way in five minutes I can share the level of excitement I see in my students every day. So a couple of these pictures, I have to tell you in advance, none of these pictures were posed. A couple of months ago, I looked around my room, and I saw something that just warmed my heart, and I was like, I have to capture this. And so I started taking some pictures, just randomly throughout the day, started taking some pictures, having no idea that tonight I'd be standing here showing this. So I hope these pictures are those thousand words that I can't share with you tonight. So I hope they get to do that for you. So we began our day with something called our warm-ups and their brain teasers. And it's just a way for our students to exercise their brains and kind of get going and, but what I really like about them, first of all, is that they love them. If you think you're going to get by with not doing a warm-up one day, they'll remind you otherwise. And because they really do love them, and they're a way to get our students to critically think about problem-solving and give them a variety of ways, of other ways to tackle problems. So that's one of the things that we do. Those are just some examples of some of the warm-ups that we do. And then next, so what a typical day in my classroom and all of our classrooms look like is, of course, the most important part is the reading aspect. And so every Monday through Thursday, our students have at least 30 minutes of reading time. They have, we have specialized seating throughout the classroom, and so we've divided our classes in half. And so for the first half of the class, one group will go to the special seating. When you're in that seating, you're expected to be reading. And the other students remain at the tables, and they can either work on tasks or projects that are reflections of what they have been reading, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment, but, or they can choose to read as well. Also during that time, that's when the teachers get to pull those students from the tables and have conferences and things like that, because we want this to be planned reading, not just random reading. So we get an idea of where they are with their lexiles, where they are with their interests, and make good book recommendations for them. And actually, they make some pretty good book recommendations for me as well. But we do this through a variety of things. But on Friday, because our school is a culture, has a culture of reading, I mean, we truly try to cultivate literacy throughout our whole school. So this is not just impacting our sixth and seventh graders, this is impacting our eighth graders as well, because as a school, every Friday, we stop for 30 minutes and have dear time. So the entire school stops and reads. And so that gives us an enrichment, an opportunity to do some other things on Friday, which the kids really enjoy. Genre shares are one, and I'll talk about that in just a minute, I hope I have time. We do some children's story reading books. They bring in books and share their favorite children's storybook, and yes, middle schoolers love doing that. Odd. We do some newspaper reading, some magazine reading, and other things such as that. But in one of the reading conferences that I was having with this student, she said to me, this is six weeks into the school year, she said, "I am so excited and proud of myself. I thought I would have only read three books at this point, but I have already read seven." Six weeks into the school year. And Friday, which was nine weeks into the school year, she said, "Ms. Gasser, I need to run to the media center. I just finished my 11th book." So next comes reflection. That is such an important aspect of reading. If students do not have an opportunity to reflect upon what they have read, the full knowledge of what they've read does not take place, and then the application that we're hoping that goes forth in their other classes truly don't take place. So we give them a multiple types of mediums in which they can express this reflection. Also, part of that is our conferencing with them. Another quote that I have from a student is, she said, "When you said we had to read 25 books, I was skeptical. We didn't have any time to read in my old school. For homework, we were supposed to read 20 minutes, but to be completely honest, I never did that. Now that the first week has gone by, I am halfway through a 289-page book. I'm going to be very proud of what I've read by the end of the year." So these tasks and projects that they do are just ways for them to reflect and kind of go back to what they've done. These are some examples that you're seeing of some of the reflections that they do. But one of the things that we have them reflect upon is their lexile scores. And we make them understand that a lexile score is not how well you read, it's what your vocabulary looks like and how you can apply that in your reading. And so with one of the students we were conferencing with, we explained that his lexile score had actually fallen from fourth grade to fifth grade. And so in conversation about that, he was asked, "Why do you think that is?" And he said, "Oh, that's simple. I was able to read a lot in fourth grade. I didn't get to read so much in fifth grade." From the mouths of babes. So some of these projects and tasks that we do, these are just some examples, but it gives them a way to show what they reflect upon in their reading. They like, they have prompted things upon which they're supposed to do. We have padlet pages, a genre for each one, and they get to share their ratings of a book and why they like it. And so students can visit those padlets and see what other students are reading. They can do these fun word collages with impact words and things. Our bookmarks that are to the far right corner, our book, our media center actually turns those into bookmarks and uses them in the media center, and the students get to see their own work, and other students get to share that as well. I'm going to end on our end-of-the-quarter review that we did. We had a reading survey last week, just to kind of see where our students were with all of this. And one of the questions asked was, "What do you, what do you like most about your enrichment class?" These are our top five responses. Actually having time to read. Calm, peaceful environment, which is an environment that we are trying so hard in Forsyth County to give our students. Not having to worry about tests, homework, or grades. Comfortable seating options. Surprise. And completing tasks and projects. They actually enjoy doing those tasks and projects, because it gives them a chance to really look back on what they've read. So so far, the 634 sixth and seventh grade students have already read 5,300, 5, 5,300 books shy one. Our sixth graders are reading an average, have already read an average of eight and a half books, and our seventh graders as well. The perception, 67% positive, 19 neutral, and of course, you always have those negatives, but those are to be expected, and I want those numbers to drop. One last thing I'd like to share is this last quote that a student said. Understand how this is, why it's being read this way. "I like so much reading so I can increase my English since I'm born in Asia. I must not stop reading, because if I stop reading, I'm probably not going to be successful in life really well." So we are reaching many students at many diverse levels, which is what we in Forsyth are coming to realize is happening. So thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
I think often when we think about reading and instilling that, the habit and the desire, you think of elementary school, and I like that you're focusing on it so much at middle, but then also, it's not too late to change that and get them into that habit. I mean, because you know, when you read a good book, you can't wait to read another one. So if you're, and then you're sharing what they're learning, so I'm really excited to see where this goes.
Thank you.
Basically, your students are averaging a book every week. That's incredible.
I'm a little jealous.
Yeah. They have to sit inside that 30 minutes. Thank you both very much.
Very good. Thank you. All righty. All right, we're going to take a little recess right now before we get into the business portion of our meeting, so if you'd like to exit and go home and have dinner, now would be a good time.
And first thing we'd like to talk about is our goals. Goal three, effective and efficient financial planning. And our plan is to make sure that we do the best possible job on collecting revenue and not spending money to meet our goals for 50% fund balance. And to just jump into the cash receipts and disbursements right away, as you can see, we started the year off, excuse me, the month off with 37, almost $37 million, and ended at 25. We are behind schedule for last year, and the reason is this. If you look under cash receipts for tax and grants on a property, where it shows we had $9 million, this time last year, we had 28.3. So the collections were a little bit ahead last year where they are this year. I talked to Amanda Marsh over there, and she says it's just the timing of when the money comes in. Last year, they had a lot of companies that were collecting the funds, they were just sending it early, and they haven't seen that rush this year as like they did last year. So that's the main reason. So with that being said, our ending cash equivalent is down to 25 million in the month, and last year, we were at 45 million. So that just means we're going to have to keep an eye on cash flow for the next couple weeks going forward, especially within October. We are predicting to have a big download in the month, October. Last year, we looked at it, and it was close to $75 million, so we should see the first big chunk of money come then.
Well, the fact that it happened also illustrates why we need to maintain a 15% fund balance, because we have to have that money to pay bills if it becomes necessary.
Correct. In terms of cash receipts in total, you can see it's 34 million point six. We were at 50.8 total. The biggest difference again is the local property tax money coming in at nine versus 28, and the cash disbursements was 41 million last year versus 46. Again, a lot of that has to do with a big increase in salaries and benefits that the governor enacted last year that we include in our budget. Looking at year-to-date budget report for the end of the month for revenue, year-to-date, we're at 75.6. We're at 15.66%. This time last year, we were 89, 19.96. That has a lot to do again with the property tax not coming as robust as it did this time last year. And if we look at expenses, we're at $121.5 million at 26.19. Last year, with a 112.3 at 25.77. The percentage difference is not much higher. The dollar amount is a lot higher there. Again, it's because we have a bigger increase in our salaries and benefits. If we look at debt service cash analysis, we're at 46.8 total. Last year, we're at 36.3. The amount of money we're getting in for the SPOSS IV money, excuse me, SPOSS V money's been really well coming in, and I will go over that later in the rest of the report. Investment summary. The total investment is $117.9 million. That is down from last year, but we have been spending a lot of money on schools lately, so we expect to see that number drop a little bit. Last year, it was 218 million total. This is the good news. If you look at the total average at the bottom for collections, it's 3.3 million. Last year, it's 3.24. So we're bringing about 72, almost 73,000 more a month on average than we were last The balances for all the elementary schools are normal compared to last year. The same thing is for middle and high school. There's no big difference. They're pretty much on par where they were. And last but not least, the any balances, the middle schools are a little bit higher, were a little bit higher last year compared to this year. They were about 20% of total balances. So there's been a shift a little bit in the money, but it seems like the middle schools are not collecting as much money or not spending as much money as they have in the past, and that's about it. And that's the financial statements for the month of September 2019.
Any questions? Sounds all good.
Thank you, Larry.
All right, sir.
Now, we have some more fun stuff. Action items, naming of a performing arts center with Ms. Jennifer Crotzlo. Good stuff. I think Wes is a little excited about this.
Wes is. Yeah. We are. So I'm excited tonight to give you the update on where we are with naming the new Performing Arts Center instead of calling it Another Pack. We placed this out on the internet to get feedback from the community, and we had over 50 responses with some recommendations. So we had the staff meet with Mr. M- So we had the staff meet with, Mr. McCall was our Board of Education representative, and we had Martha McConnell and George Perkel from the Historical Society, and then on the staff side, it was myself, Tim Amerson, Greg Pruitt, and Catherine Keizer Kaiser. But one of the things that we are excited about is some of the recommendations that we received from the community, and one of them kind of sparked our interest about, you know, there are some really great people in the community that are deceased, that have done wonderful things, or that are still alive, thankfully, that have done some wonderful things too for the arts. But the whole vision for the Performing Arts Center is about supporting the entire community and being a focal point for the arts. And it's more than just a building, it's a place where we can have festivals, where students can come in and they can have learning opportunities as well. So one of the recommendations was to name it Focal. And we kind of took that name and tweaked it a little bit, and we decided that our recommendation to you tonight would be to call it the Forsyth County Arts and Learning Center, which would still be the Focal Center for short. So it would be the Focal Center, or Center of Main Point or, Point of Interest for Arts and Learning in our county. All arts would converge at this location. So I would like at this time to request to the superintendent that we reapprove the official name of the PAC to be the Forsyth County Arts and Learning Center.
Recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Wes, second by Tom, all in favor? I like that, it was a good thought.
I just want to say thank you to Jennifer for facilitating that discussion. It was really neat to go through, and we really looked at all 58 something suggestions and talked about each one of them. And for me, to learn about some of the educators that this county has had, they have left their footprint in performing arts. And so to go through it was really hard to say, hey, you know, which one's better than the other. So we started talking about the focal point. And to Dr. Bearden's point that I always like to share, is that our learning centers and schools are the hub of the community, and so this is going to be the hub of performing arts for our county, and we're very excited about it. So thank you, Jennifer, for your leadership and being able to facilitate that.
All right. Good stuff.
Okay, now that we have an official name, before Mr. Winning steps up, I wanted to show you a quick video that our architectural firm, Jan, has been a pleasure to work with. We've had fun doing visits with her around Georgia, coming up with different ideas, and I think she loves us so much, that's why Jan and her husband relocated here recently to Forsyth County from Griffin.
Wow.
This is Jan's work.
Can you orient people that are watching this, what direction?
Behind us. These two buildings are directly behind us.
Reminds me of Alliance a little bit. Yeah, let's go walk in.
Wow, that reminds me of the one in Greenville.
Really 16 in the main and then 200 in the black box.
This would be the Black Box Theater that you're seeing right now?
It's supposed to hold about 200 people.
Prior to that was the auditorium, the theater. So to the right is ACE, and then to the left is the new Focal Center.
That's beautiful.
Very cool.
Thank you.
And there's more information about the center too, at Forsyth.k12.g a.us/future.
And could you just remind everybody what ACE is, what's in ACE building?
ACE is the Academies for Creative Education. It's our non-traditional programs. We have Gateway Academy, Forsyth Academy, and then Forsyth Virtual Academy.
One of the things we talked about with Ms. Keizer and her vision is that she wanted this whole area to be a learning lab, not just for kids to go and perform at, but for other kids to go in and learn how to produce a show or work the lights. And so that's when learning came into the word for the focal, it's like, this is going to be a learning center for them also. So it was really good to have her in there to share that.
Oratorical contest, just think of all the things we can do in there.
Tom, I can picture you playing your bass on that stage when I saw it.
He could have been the marching band.
That's right.
I think it could be a center point, but I was in Greenville during fall break, and
we went and saw Willy Wonka, the play, and the theater looked very much obviously like that, and it was, it was nice to have something to go do there while we're in the city, just hanging out. So I can see this again being a real community hub for us, so. All right, so Mr. Winning, if we're going to build it, we have to do the next step, so.
Well, good evening. Over the past six weeks, we've executed a very intense competition process in the procurement for general contracting services for ACE, PAC, and Hendrix Middle School. So as you know, and as you have in your detail, we use best value, most advantageous to our district, which is really a combination of 30 objective factors related to qualifications and price. In these two scenarios, and when I say two, right, ACE and PAC is combined, economies of scale, it's the same site, it's logistics, makes same design, so that's one general contractor, the other general contractor for Hendrix Middle School. You know, I think to the unique advantage of the school district, we have two contractors that were both the highest rank for qualifications, but yet gave us the lowest price competitively. So that makes what I'm about to say a little easier in the recommendations. It's really most advantageous to us. So for academies for creative education and the Performing Arts Center, we received five proposals. You will see that the contractor's proposed price is $55,628,250. While local funds are typically allocated and attributed to, to most of our projects, this is a little different, right? As a performing arts center, it's not an instructional unit, so we don't get local funds. And while we do have instructional units for ACE, they're more program, so those get directly allocated to the high school. So this will be all local funds. Having said that, I think the formal recommendation is, it is recommended that the board approve Carol Daniel Construction Company as the responsible and responsive offer, whose proposal is the most advantageous to the board as general contractor for the academies for creative education and performing arts center.
Just a reminder to our, to our public, this is part of our 2018 bond package. This was included in that $295 million that our citizens approved, and I recommend approval of the general contractor for ACE and the Performing Arts Center.
Okay, and for that, the timeframe would be, just to refresh our memories?
Sure. Groundbreaking this November. Exciting design, as you saw in Jan and Tim, congratulations moving that design. ACE would be substantially complete in April 1 of 2021. Substantial completion then, punchless complete, et cetera, would be ready for the fall. The Performing Arts Center, given the more complicated the design that you saw, we're targeting more the end of fall, winter of 2021 for that opening prior to Christmas and some of the holidays. So that's where we stand right now.
So roughly thinking about 18 months for ACE and probably two years on the Performing Arts Center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so for the fall of 2021, I still have a hard time with that, we will then have East High School, Hendrix, and ACE should be all ready to open that fall.
Yes, sir.
And then towards the winter, hopefully the Performing Arts Center.
Should be nice for the spring concerts, for the bands.
Right, yes.
All right, is there a motion to approve that contract?
Second.
Motion by Nancy and a second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Exciting.
And then the Hendrix?
Okay, so similarly to what I described, Hendrix Middle School, we're in a unique great position of the contractor per year detail, having the highest rank qualifications, the lowest price. As another preface, you may recall our recently completed DeSana Middle School. DeSana, and you'll understand why I'm going through this, DeSana was 150,000 square feet because it accommodated approximately 1,000 students. Given the huge population growth in the area of Hendrix Middle School, this building is 216,000 square feet, accommodating 1,500 students. I go through that because dollars per square foot is very similar to DeSana, but you may recall DeSana in the $30 million range, both the square footage, as well as dam breach, as well as geotechnical conditions. As, as the community gets more mature, as property gets harder and harder to come by, typically the properties that we do acquire do have a little bit more geotechnical work associated with it than a vast rural area. We see that, whether it's rock or some other things. So I go through all that as a reconciliation to the proposed construction price, which is $40,639,536. The one caveat there is you do have a reconciliation page, you saw the contractor's best and final offer of the $40,375,000, but we strategically went through and added some scope alternates, add alternates that then do reconcile to the $40,639,536. In terms of local reimbursement, after state reimbursement of $6,464,597 in DOE capital outlay qualified for the school, local funds of $34,174,939 will be required, similar to what Dr. Bearden described in the overall bond program. That certainly fits within our overall budget of what we anticipated in the program.
And Evergreen built DeSana, if I remember correctly as well.
I'm sorry?
Evergreen did build DeSana.
Yes. Wonderful that they did it, you know, that was one qualification and criteria, they did a phenomenal job for us at DeSana. It is the same staff, they're not getting it because they did DeSana, but that was one of 30 factors.
And you know how to work with them then.
Yes.
Okay, with that, recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Nancy and a second, Tom, any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
And we're going to, we have the groundbreaking for that in November as well, I believe.
Do we have a date for that yet?
Same, same date before the board meeting of the work session.
Okay.
It's at 2:00, one's at 4:00.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Dr. Bearden, cords of information.
Just one note, this morning, board members had their first of, well, I guess it'll be four meetings with building principals. We met with half of the elementary principals this morning, just to discuss how things were going in their schools, talk about resources they may need for the future as we start building our budget for next school year. Really great conversation. Kristen and Nancy were there this morning representing the board, and then we'll have those other three meetings throughout this, this fall, so great conversation.
It was great to have that one-on-one with them, hear what they're saying. All right, is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Nancy, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you all.